It is 7:01 PM. Workshop of the Arundel Planning Board to order. We have on the agenda tonight. A discussion with action. The proposed revision to the residential growth ordinance. We have a discussion of the land carrying capacity as a factor in determining subdivision compliance with approval criteria. Item number three is proposed changes to the cluster subdivision standards in 9312 and the subdivision regulations related in relation to carrying capacity. And then we'll have some other discussion afterward.
Like?
We may, we may not get that far Marty, but first we need to approve the agenda.
I approve, I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Marty seconded it.
Aye.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor, Marty?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Roger?
Aye.
Jens?
Aye.
It is unanimous.
What about you, Rich?
Oh, that's why it's unanimous. Okay. We have no public comment tonight because this is just a workshop. Okay. So we won't be getting into that aspect of it.
And the minutes will wait till next week.
Yes, the minutes will wait until next week. So the first item, the revisions to the land use sort, hey Jamie?
Jamie's here.
Let the record show that Jamie has joined us.
Come right down and be quiet.
We'll leave him on mute, he'll be quiet all day.
I was writing something, I thought you were talking to Jamie, Susan.
Oh no.
I was talking to the DOG.
Is that anything like the DOL?
DoL, DOG.
Okay, so you've, you've all got something that Tad sent out. Where essentially we have looked at, in the definitions, we have looked at what resident is. And then there was, there's a section a little further down. In 14C, this ordinance does not apply to accessory, accessory apartments as defined in sections 3.2 and 9.31 of the land use ordinance. In 1.7, there were some changes. In addition to any unused permits that may have accrued in the preceding month. No more than, but there'll be no more than 40 dwelling units. No more than 40 dwelling units shall be granted permits in each year. So basically what, what we're saying is that if you don't use them all up in January, they will carry over into February, then carry over, as opposed to just saying, well, you know, there's only four of them in any given month. Am I understanding that correctly Ted?
Believe, let me look at it again.
17A, building permit selection.
Yeah, it was four dwelling units granted residential permits in any calendar month in addition to any unused permits that may have accrued in the preceding months.
Right.
Which means, you know, usually what happens, I think that Jason had brought this up at the last meeting. Practice has been that January, except in this year, January and February are usually slow start months. Because of the weather. And people find that they just don't want to start with a snowpack. So January, February are usually slow, March, they start picking up, April, they're interrupted for a while because roads are posted. So there often is a backlog of unissued permits. And what Jim usually does in that situation is he will, he will issue what he's got for that, for, from that month all the way back to the first year. If he, if, if he has only issued only two permits in, in three months, you know, the, the remaining permits he will issue on a first come, first served basis when they come in. And he usually, he usually does it on a first come, first served basis in the past because there's never been the need to use the point system until this year.
Through the chair.
Yeah Marty.
Four times, uh, four times 12 is 48. How does it, 40?
It's four, no more than four, but that, whatever, whatever's left over Marty, it said 40, so when you hit 40, it's all over. You can't issue more than four a month is the point.
Yeah, so if he, if he would have issued four every month.
Unless they're in reserve.
Yeah, unless they're in reserve, that's why we changed the language there too. In addition to any unissued permits that may have accrued in the preceding months.
I have a couple of questions. Rich, Ted. So my sense is that we don't have any leftovers this year because this trend we're seeing is going to continue, I believe, people are going to continue to want to come north to Maine. That's my personal opinion. And you could get by carrying over to the next month and then into the new year, you could get a glut all at once, don't you think?
If you, if you read it, at the end of the year, any of those 40 permits that were not issued, on December 31st, they expire. They do not roll into the new year.
That's what, I mean, I think that that hedges the, your vulnerability to having the permit office overrun in the event that we all of a sudden get a lot more requests than we really have bandwidth.
I think one of the other things that, that is in here. Ted, do you have any idea how many accessory apartments got building permits this year?
Four.
Okay, so we, we've got.
We wouldn't have had anybody waiting if, if accessory apartments weren't, were excluded from the tally of residential dwelling.
Okay.
Residential growth permits.
That's, that's what I thought. And, you know, honestly, I see no reason that we, that we should make somebody who's putting in a mother-in-law apartment, get a building permit for it. Get a residential building permit for it. I, we've already told them that they can have the mother-in-law apartment, as long as it's connected into the same septic system. So I, I don't see, I, I, I think that that's a, a good solution to part of the problem.
Rich? Rich?
Yeah Marty.
Does an accessory have a size max?
Yeah, it was.
50% of the floor space of the principal structure up to 800 square feet, which I think is very generous.
It's a very generous.
It can be a standalone unit though, it's got to be attached to the existing property.
No, it can be standalone.
No, yeah.
To the septic system and the well.
Okay.
It has to share the septic system and the well.
Okay.
That ensures that we don't really start having a situation where we're creating functional subdivisions.
Yeah, if, if you remember correctly, that issue came up with the place that used to be, was it, it wasn't a Rundle auto, it was the repair shop on, at the corner of Maplewood and Limerick.
On Rundle Transmission.
Thank you, Rundle Transmission. He built it in a, in a barn garage on the corner of his property on, off Maplewood. And then ran into a problem when he found out he couldn't, so he asked us to take care of it. And we did.
Actually, he was one, but if you remember, I think the La Flames asked us first to, to do this.
He, well.
But that was, that was, that was to get an accessory dwelling unit, size increase, and then also to make it separate, but I don't believe the planning board made it separate at that time.
We did not.
And it was the Rundle Transmission application, the planning board finally said, okay, that can be separate because they saw the value of, of being able to have a little guest house in the back for grandma or for relatives who come to visit. And also to have some separation with the family, if it's going to be an apartment, which we have to understand that we've gone through an evolution when it comes to it, what we call ADUs, which really was the way they started off life, was an accessory dwelling unit, it was meant to be a mother-in-law apartment. And it's grown from that in, because we all knew that eventually grandma or mother-in-law will pass and you'll have an empty unit. And often there's, there's a desire to either have it reoccupied by another family member or to rent it out as additional income. And efforts to curb that or to remove, to make it part of the, or principal building again. In various other towns, cities that specifically Westboro found that trying to get people to pull out kitchen equipment after they made the investment into it to convert a accessory dwelling unit into another part of the house by pulling out the kitchens was politically very unpopular and resulted in near revolts, especially in Westbrook. So it's, it's all evolved to eventually admit that it's an accessory, it's an accessory apartment. Everybody has the right to have an apartment over the garage or build a little outbuilding in the back for relatives who visit or to give it to some kid over at, at, at the local school, you know, at, at one of the universities and so.
Okay. Since we're, we're not gonna, we're not looking at changing that, or at least I, I hope we're not. So, I, I want to know, I want to get, get, get a sense of the board, how you feel about 14C. This ordinance shall not apply to any, to an accessory apartment as defined in section 312, 3.2 and 9.3.1. Do you think that that's a good idea? Or should we have it apply to accessory units? Personally, I, I don't think it needs to apply to an accessory apartment.
Yeah, I agree with you Rich. Yeah.
Yeah.
And that, that tends to solve the reason that we ran up against. We, we'd have, we'd have pretty much, I think we'd have ended up at 41 if we didn't have. No, we'd have ended up at, we ended up at 40, so we had.
We had 42.
We had 42, three or four of which were accessory apartments, so we would have been in good shape.
Now that, as Susan's saying, we may receive more development pressure in the future that this 42 that we said this year may result in 45 next year. But the whole purpose is if, if this growth ordinance is supposed to pace out residential, single-family development, then if we keep raising it, then the question is why do we have it? In the first place. You know, the, the objective is to hit that mark at some point. There is a fallback position that after, with three years of moving average, if, if there's that much extra pressure that's, that's evoked, the, the board can recommend increasing the number of permits by five or 10% or any number in between, or decreasing it. I mean, if you recall, what, the last time we did this, the, the data suggested decreasing the, the units down to 28. Because we had that much of a lull in, in. So that was rejected at town meeting, if you recall, it was resumed to be 40. So we've held 40 ever since the mid 2000s.
So it appears that, that everybody is in agreement that we should not apply them to accessory apartments.
Agreed.
Yep. Great.
I agree with that too, but I have a question for Ted. Is placing a number on the, you know, I think there are a number of things to discuss about issuing of building permits, whether they should be single-family and permits for multifamily and senior living and over 55 perhaps should be dealt with separately. But it, do most towns set the limits based on number? Or on some other qualities that are not necessarily numerical to control growth? Am I, am I making sense?
Yes, you are. Most towns don't have a growth ordinance.
Yeah, I was just going to ask that, do they even have it? I was wondering about that when Susan was asking the question, especially towns of far modest size.
Yep. Usually what happens is the planning board, as I mentioned last meeting, the planning board can be the one who, who puts the brakes on in phasing developments that they approve. Rundle, the planning board hasn't had subdivisions to approve in the last eight years because we went through the crash of, of 2008 and most of the lot development we've seen since then has been by splits or family divisions. And subdivisions have been few and far between, and this is the first year in which we had a spate of them come out. We, we've had five subdivisions before us in one form or another, and we're coming. In fact, I talked to a gentleman right after our meeting, by the way, on Wednesday, who wants to put in a multifamily unit of a project up in, on Thompson Road. So that gives you an idea of some of the pressures that are coming down. Now I will tell you that given how he wants to do this, this growth ordinance would probably pretty much chase him away to another town.
So my question to you is, is number, is the number of permits, given the fact that they're all in one basket right now?
Right.
Is, is that the best way to consider a, an intelligent growth? What would be the strategy for the town and perhaps there are other ways to define intelligent growth, strategic growth in a Rundle other than by limiting it by number? Does that make sense?
Yes, there are, there are lots of other benefits.
Okay, so that would ultimately be my vote, is to kind of split this up into tranches and start with single-family houses and not necessarily limit the growth by number, but by type maybe.
That, that could be, it could be an interesting effort to do it that way. I mean, the issue is that back when this was, this was first promulgated back in the 77, I mean, Rundle went through a little bit of growth pressure and it resulted in 1977 in, in this ordinance, which was basically to, to divert additional growth off to the surrounding communities and the limit was 35 per. The population was about 3,100 at that time. And so it was a, it was a kick the can down the road kind of of system and a safety valve system that the pressure had to be too much that the town could slow the, slow it down by putting brakes on. I'm not sure that's going to be very effective in the future at this point. And I think the planning board could, could do a better job, as you're suggesting, Susan, by, by phasing projects and phasing development requiring fiscal, fiscal impact analysis on subdivisions. You know, subdivision that, let's say if you did a fiscal impact on Hisong, if Hisong wasn't moderated, the, his project had not been moderated by basically a crash in the market. He could have brought 42, 42 units online very quickly. Because the planning board did not put any restrictions on how he should phase that development so that the school system could adjust to it. And this, and the, 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 the Public Works Department could plan for, for the additional roadway. And what happened, of course, as you know, is, is, is it crashed and they folded up their tent, went home until the market improved. In that me, in the meantime, a number of things had happened. One is we joined the RSU. And, which gives us all a little bit more insulation, if you will, from the impact of suddenly getting a large group of kids running through the system that comes from development. We're able to spread that risk, if you will, among three towns, one of which doesn't have many kids in the first place. But, yeah, we could take a look at, at, at that and it probably would be advisable, but in many ways right now, I think one of the first things that, that the selectmen are looking for us to do perhaps is to eliminate what I would call illegal liability that we currently have. That legal liability is this point system, which quite frankly does not provide equal protection of the law. It rewards those people who have been here the longest, it rewards those families who have been here in a Rundle for an extended period of time and, and gives them preference over any other property or especially the newcomer. And I think that's, the immediacy of this is number one, because we had with the alarms went off, we went over the limit, the dam broke, well, well, the water tops the dam, let's put it that way. And, and suddenly people started questioning, hey, this isn't fair. I, I, why am I being, I've been forced out, I think you heard Jason talking about that, you know? Not that, that we're worried about that necessarily because he'll get his permit next week, next month. But it does highlight that we do have a potential illegal liability here that we probably need to take care of, and that is first take care of the issue of the point system, make it fair and equitable for all people. And then I think we do have to take a look at, do we really need this? And I think I, I mentioned that at the last meeting was, do we really need this system? And I think you're going to have to, maybe I'm wrong, Marty, you might be able to tell me, or, or any of you who have been here a long time. Would, would it be acceptable, would the townspeople be even, even consider the prospect of eliminating the growth ordinance? In lieu, you know, in favor of something else?
But you see, the thing is under this growth ordinance or whatever else that infrastructure. And we do not have a mass infrastructure, except for the new town hall. I mean, of budgeting wise and everything else.
Well, you're absolutely right, from the standpoint of, yeah, it's going to, it's going to require additional infrastructure. I think we've already taken care of the school infrastructure pretty well at this point.
Matter of point.
Well, you know, we have.
I'm just saying matter of point.
All schools right now, so.
Yes. Of course, they aren't in school anyway, so what's the difference?
Well, there's, there's that point, but there will be, this, this too shall pass. And eventually we will get back to normal. And at that time, we, we seem to have adequate capacity. That doesn't mean school budgets aren't going to increase, they always do. But there are certain plate, plateaus they reach, which suddenly there's a big, big increase. And we've gone through that when we, we joined the RSU and made all the improvements to all the school systems so that they're ready to accept the additional students. I think from a facility standpoint with the school, which is our most dangerous place, a facility, you know, capital, capital costs in the school should not be increasing dramatically in the future, but you know, per student costs and personnel costs probably will increase as we increase the students. Infrastructure, fire department will probably have to put on more, another ambulance at some point. They certainly need to expand their, their station. And town hall's taken care of it this time, and the only other issue would really be public works. And, and adequate number of people are there to handle the road construction, the road maintenance issues. So I think that would be part of a, part of the, what we would have to consider. And something the planning board should probably start doing some, some analysis on, we can do some analysis of what fiscal impacts of growth will be to the town. That's not just limited to the town manager. It's something the planning board is actually, should be on the forefront, the tip of the spear on. And most other communities, you'll find like Scarborough or Falmouth, other communities that go through a lot of, of development, a lot of development pressure. They've been working on, on what the fiscal impacts are for quite some time, and they adjust their land use policy accordingly.
Through the chair.
You would hang on for a minute Marty. To, to address Susan's query. I, I think it might be a good idea if we could study that, but I think we need to come up with now with a solution for what we currently have. So that, because this has to go to town meeting. So if we can, if we look at this and we say we're satisfied with it, we can then start looking at it between now and town meeting, look at some of the alternative ways of implementing a growth ordinance other than just by the number of permits. Yes, sir.
Actually Marty was, Marty was ahead of me, excuse me Marty, I didn't mean to jump you.
That's fine, but we turned around and said, for us to look at it, why do not the selectmen? Because they're the ones who want everything or vice versa. Why don't they do some of the homework to pass to us?
Well, they could do that because the, you'll notice that amendments to the ordinance can be by the planning board. They actually have to be approved by the planning board and the selectmen concurrently or together.
Yeah, but that makes, that doesn't make us the bad guys.
Well, I'm not sure if we're going to be the bad guys.
We are, last time we tried.
Uh, but we're not afraid of that Marty.
We're not really afraid of that.
So Ted.
Bad guys.
Suggest, Rich, and I, I kind of feel this way because I have a bad habit of wanting to make my decisions based on evidence. And I don't have the longevity with this board or even residency in a Rundle, maybe like, like Sue, to make decisions about whether 40 is a good number or 36 or 50 or whether we even need this thing at all. It feels peculiar thinking about this without having an understanding that we have in fact ever exceeded capacity for infrastructure or any of the other related needs that are associated with growth. I just don't have the, the history with that. And I think it's odd without either having that or having current statistical analysis on which to base a rational decision. I almost feel like, you know, let's not have anything until we study it, I mean, get rid of it, study it, develop the information, either the planning board does or the planning board does with the selectmen. And then tailor whatever we do to the logically predicted needs.
I mean, that, that would, that's similar to what Susan's saying, only you're saying with a, with a, with a fixed number, Susan's saying some other way of doing it. There are some things right now within the ordinance that we can tweak and correct. Be it, you know, like, like the accessory apartments, for example, by eliminating those, they're going to free up three or four permits for building. Leah has advised us that the point system is, is in all probability unconstitutional. That we can eliminate the point system, we can at least have something that we can take to, to the town meeting. If the town meeting shoots it down, that's up to the town meeting. I, I would just like to say, you know, if we had something that, that we could put together and say, okay, the, these minor adjustments, not changing the number or playing with any of that, these minor adjustments would be a good thing to take to the town meeting. And in the meantime, between now and then, we can, we can start working up the information that would back up both what you're saying and what Susan's saying and see if we can't find some better method. Cause we've got six months before we go to town meeting.
That sounds, that sounds very sensible to me, actually.
I was going to say, eminently reasonable, I mean, that's sort of what I was thinking, and I, I don't think we should get rid of the residential growth ordinance, but I think we can probably dispatch with the point system and eliminate accessory sheds from the permit calculation, but then start to think about issuing permits on a qualitative rather than a quantitative basis and perhaps that will get us closer to achieving the rural character that we're hoping to ultimately get in our lifetimes in the town of Arundel. So I'm with you 100% Rich.
I think if we try to get rid of the, the growth ordinance, we're going to take it to town hall and we're going to have as much luck with that as we did three years ago when we tried to lower the rate. And as, as we did a couple of years back when we tried to deal with animal husbandry, and it's not going to go anywhere.
So why don't we just do what you suggest, Rich, for now and move on? It's a change, it's substantive, and we can think about the other issues in the next six months.
Yep.
And I would say.
I'm all for that.
It's right through the chair, if the selectmen are amenable to doing this in a special town meeting, we're ready to go if they want to do that, or if they want to wait till. Or if they wanna wait till, till, uh, June, that gives us a chance to decide whether or not, uh, we can come up with an alternative or at least put in some of the, uh, some of the exclusion, exclusions or the modified permit, permits for different types of housing. So we don't find ourselves shutting out developments that, um, you've actually want, that you've requested through your comp plan, but the growth ordinance will not permit.
Right, and that brings you back to qualitative as opposed to quantitative, so.
And how do we, how do we get the, or the development of, you know, facts, what we need in the future? Is that something that we particularly have to be, uh, solely doing? Or can we split the burden sharing with the selectmen by some agreement that has them doing part of it and the planning board do a part of it? And we, uh, confer with them back and forth as to how that?
I think we can approach the selectmen and say, this is what we're, we need some help from you guys. Let us, let us know how we wanna go about doing this. Or do you want us to do it all? Bear in mind that if you want us to do it all, you may not like the results.
I, I, we can't do it as, as a, as a, uh, an isolated body. Number one, you're gonna need to talk to the department heads. The environment heads are gonna have the keys to understanding what capital improvement's gonna need when certain population thresholds are met. Roger will tell you how many people he's gonna need if you add X number of miles of road. Um, Jen will tell you, you know, that there's certain levels of more of support. She's gonna need to be able to handle X number more of, uh, entrance to recreational program. Fire is gonna tell you, you know, we get X number of houses and I don't have equal number of personnel, especially considering volunteerism is starting to collapse. And he's, they're gonna need more per diems, uh, if not more full timers. These are all capital and operational costs that growth creates as a result. And so we can't come up with a fiscal impact analysis or a capital, capital improvement plan without, without the direct, you know, uh, participation of the town manager and the department heads.
So how do we go to triggering that, uh, that, uh, work to be generated? Uh, that response to be generated by department heads? Do we, should we be doing that or should we request town manager to do that or? What do you think?
I, I, I would talk to the town manager, first of all. It's his department, they're his departments, we all work for him technically.
When we come back, we go, we go to him and we ask, could you please ask the department heads for such an analysis and have it to us by such and such a day?
Um, we can do that. I think we first have to sell him on the necessity of doing this. That would be, and, and it doesn't hurt to also sell it to the selectmen too. You might wanna make a presentation to the board of selectmen saying, this is what we feel we need to do to really plan for the future. And we're the planning board, but this is what we feel needs to be done and needs to be a group operation, group effort by, you know, the, the, the staff and by the selectmen and by us. And probably pull in other part of people too. But in the end, uh, the planning board will produce it.
To the chair.
Yeah, Marty.
Correct, uh, even with this minor change, as we have said, it still has to go to public hearing, correct?
Correct.
Okay, if the people now get on board or know about it, we may get other input.
I would expect that.
Outside.
Yep.
So we're not blindsided.
Agreed.
Depending on the workload becomes
First, before we have a public hearing, to see if we get any response, which we may not. But if we actually post it asking for input, either on the town website or whatever else, not because that at least gets somebody out there starting to talk and think with the selectmen and everything else.
Good point.
For the time being, we can make these two changes, one of which the selectman and Leah wants us to make. And work on providing it by.
I said, I can see doing one, but not both.
Not the, uh, eliminating the accessory, uh.
Eliminating the accessory, but still leave the growth by points for now.
Because I personally don't understand that myself. To me, it just doesn't seem equitable, but maybe I haven't lived here long enough to understand it.
Let's get the input.
That's one of the problems, it, it is inequitable. Um, and, uh, it's, it's always a dangerous place to, to, that's dangerous waters to tip your toe in. And we're fully immersed in it because we're not providing equal, equal protection and equal opportunity under the law. And so there will probably be elements of the selectmen who would be very opposed to this. But I think the fact that, that the town council, the town attorney, um, is advising us to fix this. Um, and if she can help supply the information to the, uh, to the selectmen that, uh, you're, you've got a liability here and it needs to be fixed before.
You know, I suspect that if she is advising that, it must be based on some kind of ca- main case precedent.
Yes.
And that would be interesting to look at that, particularly if the precedent is not too old, but old enough for us to do some investigation as to how that town rectified that problem. So that we're not starting at square one, you know? Uh, maybe we get some, the benefit of some, um, uh.
Foundation.
Yeah.
Cause, well.
Would she share that, uh, that, that, uh, the basis for her advice in terms of, uh, uh, the towns in Maine that are, are apparently the, the case precedent for the problem?
I didn't spend that much of the town's money, to be honest with you. I just, what do you think? I think this is a constitutional issue and she said, you're right, you need to get rid of it. But I didn't ask her for her case law on that.
No, but if she answered, if she answered that presumably, she didn't pull that out of the sky.
No, she didn't, I, I, she must have looked up something.
Right.
Have the selectmen ask them.
I imagine if you had a good real estate attorney and you wanted to overturn that, I would imagine you could. I really do. And I think that's really what she's sort of telling you.
Yeah.
That this is, uh, on shaky ground. I guess you could look on LexisNexis, I could ask one of my kids to look.
But, but to Jens' point, she must have had some foundation to make that clean. And if she does, she should share that foundation with us so that we know.
I agree with that too.
It, it helps us, it would help us move forward more, more efficiently, quickly with this.
I, I agree Jens, I really do.
Wish Chris Vanny Otis was still around because he went through this in Yarmouth, North Yarmouth. But I guess he beat, beat out of there and went to, went to Arizona instead, but he had to deal with that.
Who?
Uh, he's, he's, uh, Jens, you know Chris, right?
Who was it?
Chris Vanny Otis from Bernstein.
He was at Bernstein.
Yeah, he was at Bernstein. He, he went, he was the chairman of the, uh, the North Yarmouth, uh, planning board. And they, they had the growth ordinance, which they pretty much, uh, eliminated. For a similar, for a similar kind of reason that was
But you're speaking of a different town with infrastructures and everything else.
Every town has infrastructure, Marty. Every, every town has got to deal with, with the cost of development. Every community, every time you have any kind of development, there's costs associated with it. And smaller towns have a harder time with it, which is why Rundle invoked this, uh, ordinance back in seventy-seven because there was a small town, they got a spate of growth.
Again, that's coming back to impact fees.
So I'll ask David Soli to look it up. And David's at Bernstein, sure. So I'll do that on my dime, I'll just ask him. I'm sure he can have an associate take a look.
I was gonna see what the law is. I, I'm gonna suggest that we take what we've got right now. Get that information either from Leah or from Mr. Soli. Uh, that will, that will give us the answer we're looking for. And then, then go to the selectmen, tell the, show the selectmen, this is what we're looking at doing. Uh, and have a, and then have a public hearing on it. Or we can, we could just do a workshop, uh, related to just that ordinance for one day, uh, so that we could have some input from the citizens to find out how they feel about it. You know, they, for all we know, they may wanna keep accessory apartments in there.
Well, why don't we try with the two things, Rich, that you suggested? And that is keep the ordinance, take the accessory apartments out and eliminate the, uh, the quota and see what happens. And in the meantime, I'll ask, uh, my contacts at Bernstein, sure.
Okay, if we, if we eliminate the quota, we eliminate the, the entire purpose of the ordinance?
No, not the quota, I think, uh, she was talking about the point system.
Oh, the point system.
Yes, you're right, quota wasn't the right word, point system.
Point system.
We, we eliminate those two and we go to the selectmen and we, this is what we're looking at. You know?
What do you think?
Yeah.
I agree, I vote for that.
Everybody okay with that?
No.
What's up, Marty?
I still say, take the accessory apartment out as a first starter and then find out what information we have to go from there. Because
When is the last time we looked at this, at the growth ordinance?
Three years ago.
Years ago.
It's, it's a three-year recurring obligation, if not.
Right.
We looked at it and we wanted to lower it because we weren't anyplace close. We had it at forty and we had what, thirty-two that year?
No, we're less than that, that's why we could go down to twenty-eight. If you looked at the moving average over a three-year period, it said we could get twenty-eight.
And we went to the town and, uh, town meeting and said, we wanna lower it. And town meeting went, I don't think so. They, they weren't even willing to look at it.
And it's their prerogative to do so.
So I will, I will take this to the board of selectmen, either at the next meeting or the meeting afterward, so that we can get, uh, find out how they feel about it and see if we can't get, uh, the town manager to start, if the board of selectmen are happy with it, let's see if we can't get the, the town manager to start contacting the various department heads and get some input from them in terms of what they think the fiscal impact would be. Everybody okay with that?
Yep, I am.
Yeah, good.
Yep.
Onto the next item. Good, that handles the growth ordinance, hooray. The next item. Land carrying capacity. So right, right now, and this, this, this is a rather, uh, interesting concept. Right now, we look at it and we say, you have to cluster your subdivision. And there's no, uh, the only limitation is how much, what's the net developable or net density, N D D, in that area? Uh, and that defines how many houses you can put on it. But we don't take into consideration the type of soil or the quality of the groundwork. Uh, so we, so we don't know whether or not it will handle, uh, septic systems very well. Or we've got a lot of soils in this town that will not handle septic systems well at all. And when you can see that, when you look at the, the, uh, the Kennebunk Water Study, where there are issues going on.
Well, we have it at Pinecrest, the question of the wells.
But that's
Of whether or not the wells can support additional development.
And that's, that's a great example. And if, if we put development out there, can they put it out there? Yeah, there's enough land to put it out there, but what's the impact gonna be? It's gonna take away the water from, from almost everybody in the neighborhood and the people that have been there for, for a while. So this discussion revolves around, do we need to look at something other than just the fact that you have enough land to build? And to put, to put a subdivision in that particular neighborhood? Are the soils good enough? Is there enough of a, of an aquifer to, to be able to take care of everything? I'm not, I'm not sure in, in every instance that there is. I'm also not sure in every instance that we wanna say to them, you need to cluster. We may wanna look at it and say, no, you don't have to cluster.
But that's, we'll get into the next one on that one, that issue.
So should we address that first before we address this?
Well, let me just, i- if I may, Rich, can I just jump in?
Yeah, go ahead.
Carrying capacity, um, as, as it means for zoning, is actually an old concept. It's a concept where zoning was based on the suitability of the soils to accommodate development, foundations, septic systems. Um, USDA used to have a system and rated each of the soil types based on their suitability for a variety of different kinds of uses. Primarily for agricultural uses, whether you get soybeans or corn or root crops. But it also dealt with foundations and, uh, and septic systems. And I guess our, our concern is, Rich, as, as Rich had mentioned, we, we've found in the Kennebunk River watershed study that we have non-point source pollution of various major tributaries that are in a rundle. And it's probably not for breakout. It's probably not from total failure, it's probably from the long-term nutrient, uh, loading of the soils in the water table from the septic systems, which are now clearly unsuitable. And the issue should be maybe instead of always trying to get everybody to retrofit to Elgin Systems or something like that, perhaps in future development, we should start zoning less on, on a conceptual idea of how a rundle should develop. It more on based on where its good soils are and where its bad soils are. Where you have, of bad soils or poor soils, it should be much larger lots. What requirements of where you have good soils, you're getting a smaller lots. And, uh, that's called carrying capacity zoning. There are quite a few towns that still, that have this, it's making a bit of a comeback. Um, in which you actually, the lot size isn't really based on where you are in town, but it's based on what's underneath your, your, your foundation. And, uh, I, I was supposed to get you guys a few examples on this and I forgot to do it, I'm sorry. But that's the concept of, of looking at carrying capacity zoning. And of course, rezoning the whole town using car- car- carrying capacity may be a bit of a problem. We'd probably have to go back to the Comprehensio- Plan Committee again to do that. I'm not sure we wanna do that. But perhaps we could start looking at it as a way of evaluating the suitability of subdivisions based more on what they have for soils underneath. Cause right now we base it on, can you get a septic system that passes the plumbing code?
That's at present, but that's not for future, but has the
That's, that's the way it is. Can I get it? And can I get it, can I, what can I get for an exception if I'm too close to my wealth?
Has you received any other information from the group about, uh, water studies?
What, uh?
The, the conservation group about the, how it's, uh, leaching.
No, there was just that one report that they gave us.
Have they done anything more? My question.
They're supposed to be, but they haven't yet.
We need that information too.
Jamie, you look like you were gonna say something.
Well, I guess my, my thought would be if there was a, a predominant soil type or may, or perhaps even a subdivision that was going in and there was a large amount of the developed area in a, say, a poorly drained soil, instead of going down the rezoning route, why couldn't we go down the route of, um, essentially having that as part of the net density calculation?
Could do that.
Yeah.
We could, we could in fact do that. In fact, Jamie, that's one of the arguments we made with Rundle's keep it, the last meeting was, or actually before the last meeting. or actually before the last meeting, uh, saying you're putting all this stuff on non-burge soils. Now they aren't hydric non-burges. Because what it was not quite at the hydric level.
Right.
But you know what the result is? You see the models up there. It's at eight inches. You're saying, you know what's going to happen here? And, and, and the, and this, and the lots are like packed together because it's a cluster subdivision. And you know what, what eventually will happen is we will have nutrient loading, nutrient bleed over. Regardless of what the hydro geo study says, puts these little plumes in there, you know what's going to happen. And in that kind of situation, what we said, the argument we are making to, to Jason, for instance, was you're on number soils. Come on, make it, you gotta make, give us more, you gotta give us a reserved field. You gotta give us the area in which to work with. In case this field fails, which is high probability will after ten years or fifteen years. And so. Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I was just going to say by pushing Jason in that direction, Ted, he came up with a much more, and I've used this word a couple of times, elegant solution with Jens's input to what he initially thought he had to do for cluster housing.
Right. Jamie had a part in that too, as I recall, Jamie was talking about.
Yes, Jamie was a big part of that. So. Brings us to the next thing when we get to it about if we have cluster housing, how flexible it should be because a better thing came out of it by not doing it than by doing it.
Right.
Through the.
What Jamie's talking about is, you know. I'm sorry, go ahead, Marty.
Would be community septic. I mean, for a cluster housing, instead of having three, of having one system for you, the different units, so that you would have a larger, uh, area in case you need a, a different breakdown for the future?
If you have a large enough piece of good soil, that's exactly what you want to do. And that's where the planning board might have to say, as we're seeing, uh, uh, the cludiers doing, um, having individual septic tanks for the units, but then have them pump them up to a community septic field where there's, where there are suitable soils. And then there are suitable soils to do a replacement field or do a, a, a partial replacement or expansion in the event of failure.
Right.
I think, I think Marty, we're talking about it's, it's sites, site specific. It depends on the site. Depends where the soils are, depends how it, how it lays out.
We had, we had to do that. We had to do that for Bentley's in the campground.
Yep. Well, that's, that's because you aren't going to have individual septic fields for each campsite.
Yeah, but I'm just saying it was still group.
Right, but that's where the suitability and the, and the carrying capacity of the land come into consideration. Cause.
So we've done some of that before.
Very easily look at that and say, here, just, we, we did that originally with, with the seasonal cottages. Well, we didn't do it. He came to us with the idea of, of having that one massive septic system out there.
Right.
That's, that's exactly what we're talking about. The ability to regulate it to say, yes, the soil is not that good. Maybe it would be better to have only one, uh, one central location for, for a system and everybody does what Cludy is doing and they have small little tanks and they pump it out.
And that could be, and what Jamie's also suggesting is in the net residential density, put another factor in of, um, of poorly drained soils.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that suggestion personally.
That would work. Whether or not it, I don't, you know, I think we get a lot of blowback on that from people if we made it 100% that you had to take all poorly drained soils out of, of your, uh, calculation. But maybe it'd be a, I don't know.
I guess that, that's what my thought was, is it would be a factor.
A factor. I like the factor better.
You know, I mean, not that, yeah, you can't eliminate because I think there are technologies out there today that weren't there twenty, thirty, forty years ago.
Right.
That can make a septic system appropriate in an area that it wasn't. Um, or may not have been back in the day. But, you know, definitely, you know, it's worth, especially from the, the pollutant standpoint. You know, taking that into consideration.
Right. And that's a longer term. I mean, most hydro geologists gives a short-term plume analysis. Long-term, when you see multiple loadings, um, that's over ten-year, twenty-year, thirty-year period. That's where we start getting the problems that we're getting in the Kennebunk River watershed right now.
Have we used that word in our description, long-term, not short-term?
Yeah, we can use that, but and, and or the, you know, as the planning board, we're not looking at something that that works for the, the, the life of that individual septic system like the plumbing code does. Plumbing code looks at, at, at what a fifteen-year, I think it's a fifteen-year life expectancy for the typical pipe and stone septic systems that go in. And they, and, and they're, and the regulations frankly are arbitrary. You know, it's a hundred feet from the well, regardless of what soil is there. You're going to add a highly permeable soil like atom soil, which is a sand and gravel soil. It's still a hundred feet. And then you have a Corogin, which is a, you know, i- is a, is a not poorly drained, but, but moderately well-drained soil that a hundred feet is more than adequate, but in atom soil, it's not adequate.
Yeah, but that, that makes the water not salty.
Yeah. They don't make those distinctions. And I, I like the idea of looking at poorly drained soils and, and, and reducing or increasing lot size based on uh, i- by some factor, we're going to have to play with that to see what works. But I do like that, Jamie.
Yeah, that's a good, thank you, Jamie. That's a great idea.
Yay.
They come to me every now and then.
Glad you do.
More often than not. So do we know what we're doing?
No.
Ted?
No, I do. I, you know, what I think.
Sorry. I mean, what are we, are, do you, how do we add this? What Jamie's suggestion was?
Well, I'm going to have to, I'm, I may have to, I'm going to rely, rely on Jamie. Um, tell me what that factor should be, or maybe we should work out what that factor should be. What that increase should be because of poorly, poorly drained soil, or the reduction in density because of poorly drained soil, or the increase in lot size, which will carries us over into the next section on clustering. And
Do we not need facts first before we can?
Yeah.
I didn't hear you, Marty. What'd you say?
Do we not need some facts first?
Yes.
To justify.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, we can't do really, we got our suggestions and our thoughts right now. But if we get the facts and figures, even from your soil scientist or whatever else, not long-term in comparison to short-term, that'll give us a better idea of which way to go.
Well, that's a good question. I'm going to have to find out who to talk to. I'm going to talk to Jamie first of all.
I mean, I think the first thing that I would look at is what sort of your, uh, oh, and it's been a while since I've dealt with that terminology, but you know, like your, essentially your percolation rates, your infiltration rates.
Right.
To me is the big, you know, one of the big issues, but I think it, it is worth probably discussing with some of the, some of, you know, even up some of the guys that have done hydro geo studies in town.
Yeah.
Who do we know that's, that's done that recently?
Well, C M R has, um, let's see.
What's his, Jim Logan? Yeah.
Jim's, Jim's a soil scientist. I, I'm not sure if, you know, I don't think he does the hydro geo stuff.
Yeah.
He basically does wetlands delineation and septic system design, but doesn't really get into permeability, um, issues, permeability and percolation rates.
Right.
Yeah, but he would also have the soil stuff.
He has the soil stuff, but so does the hydro geologist. So I, I, I'm, I think also we, we had, uh, there's several others that we had. I see my heart comes into mind. Uh, Hallian Aldridge comes, they're expensive. They come into mind. Gillespie, eh, Gillespie doesn't really, yeah, they do it. Uh, who else might think, oh, the, the guys who did, um, I'm trying to remember. They're out of New Hampshire. Um, it's not Normandow. It's, um, it's an outfit that did the, um, Peter, Peter Lovejoy's project. Remember those folks?
No.
Okay.
I don't.
You guys, you guys never read your homework, do you?
Hey, hey, come on.
Once, once I read it and we've passed it off, I just wipe the slate clean.
Roger that. No, but it's, what you do is you go to the, the executive summary is what you go to and what, what's it say? You know, what's the map showing? What's, what, what's the conclusion? Um, I'll check out, you know, check out what we've got and, uh, and, uh, talk to them. I'll do a, a question, call them up and see what a, a study would, would involve and how much it would cost.
A good idea. We could also.
Why we need impact fees to fund this kind of stuff?
But we could, we could also consider making that part of, uh, a subdivision, uh, criteria that they give us.
The hydro geo already is, but it, it doesn't really set very good parameters on, 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 on what you're looking for. And, and we can make certain assumptions. They're making certain assumptions based on the permeability and that, and, and the percolation rates of the soil.
Could we not tell the, the hydro geologist? We want to know this particular information and what impact it's going to have as part of the study.
Well, I can make some inquiries.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm, I'm, I'll talk to Jamie too, because he's the one with the P E on this stuff. You're an environmental engineer, aren't you, Jamie?
Yeah, to some degree.
I don't think he wants to. Okay, that, that then brings us into that next, uh, section.
Yeah, clustering.
Clustering. The cluster or not the cluster?
That's the question.
Or to have to cluster.
Right. Is it optional or mandatory?
True.
Cause I, I don't want to tell somebody that they cannot cluster.
But I don't want to tell somebody that they have to cluster either.
That, that's my, that was where I was going. I don't want to tell them that, that you can't cluster and I don't want to tell them that you have to. It should be an optional choice. Um, one that we, that we as a planning board can look at and say, yes or no. Yeah, there, there may be circumstances in which, uh, clustering is just not a good idea. Or there may be circumstances in which clustering is the best idea. When, when you start looking at the soils and the impacts and everything else that it's going to have.
Well, I think, I, I think the, the playing board's got to be the gatekeeper for the town. The townspeople are depending on the planning board on, on coming up with the best designs. You know, proving the best possible designs for, for subdivisions that, that meet the standards and the character and the, the goals that the community wants from their, from their projects. How they want to develop clustered, clustering has been a long-term solution in the comprehensive plan as a way of preserving open space. And the, the incentive for developers has long been, I can reduce the amount of infrastructure I have to build by clustering. Um, because I don't have to have two hundred feet of frontage on this road for every lot I have. I, I can have a hundred feet or I can have fifty feet or, or something of that nature. I can, I can have that amount of foot, of frontage, which reduces the length of road I have to build. It reduces the costs. So that improves the bottom line for the developer. Whether it increases the absorption rate is another, another story. That depends on what people are looking for in terms of, of house types and, and, and land and lot sizes. And in this market, I don't think it matters right now. If, if, if it stands and is a house and is habitable, people are buying. But, um, you know, cluster development is, uh, very beneficial for preserving the rural character of the town. But there are some costs to that. Um, and we've already gone over some of the potential environmental costs. Um, we've also talked about, you know, whether or not, uh, they produce the kind of lots that are, are, that are beneficial or good for people, that people want, have an adequate yard. You come to a Rundle not to have, you know, a lot that's in Levittown, basically. You come to a Rundle to have a little space. And in some cases, our clustering requires you to have a smaller lot size than maybe perhaps people are looking for. And so that's the question. I mean, clustering does preserve open space. It does reduce costs and it, it reduces costs for the town if the town takes the road. Um, or, or the infrastructure. But, um, at the same time, it also reduces choice. And one of the choices some people may have is I want a five acre lot. And right now you can't have a subdivision of five acre lots.
You should be able to, if you've got, if you've got thirty acres of land or forty acres of land and you want to build five acres, five acre subdivision houses in there, you should be allowed to.
I agree.
The soils will support it.
I agree.
Yes, right now, right now, we can't do that.
Why?
Because all lots over, every subdivision over forty.
But I'm asking, what's the, what's the basis? Not just, you know, the rule, but why? Why, what was the, yeah? What's the rationale for?
The rationale is that a clustered development preserves open space, reduces municipal costs. Um, uh, allows for greater affordability in housing. And, um, also helps preserve rural character by preserving open space.
But wasn't that also the old M A V A, uh, guidelines? Which we don't have anymore guidelines anymore?
The what?
M A V A.
Good neighbor, is that, is that?
No, M B A, how we use the.
I don't have an M B A. I don't know what the.
Your cluster housing.
I don't know it, Marty. I guess I wasn't here when you had that.
Oh, that was back when, uh, Dan.
I'm, I'm not really familiar with that. I, I know you started clustering housing when Randall Rent was your planner here. He's your, your contract planner in this town. This guy wrote the book you were looking at, uh.
Yeah, but he got a lot of that information from municipality. Which was along the way when they were setting all that up.
This is back when Truman was president, Ted.
Why can't, why can't the ordinance allow for both? Because a, a community of five acre lots, I would imagine would be very desirable. Two. So why can't you have both?
What the complaint suggested was ten acre lots.
You can't even find ten acre lots.
Which is, the plan suggested it.
Well, yeah, that's true, but that's what they suggested.
Well.
There's, the complaint said that we should allow large lot subdivision. Because we had several people who were proposing that. Number one, number two, that is the, that is the usual minimum lot size in a farm preservation district or fine agricultural district. Um, that's used a lot, well, city of Auburn. Believe it or not, more progressive agricultural policies in southern Maine. And they have a ten lot subdivision, uh, regulations. So minimum lot size is ten lots.
But Ted, if you go on Zillow or real estate dot com or Realtor dot com, you can't even find five acres in a single lot.
Sure, because it's not for sale.
Well, but there are, that meant, I mean, you could do it like if Chip wanted to sell his lot.
Yeah.
What's behind me, that's four hundred plus acres or Linda Zoo's family, but how many? There is like two or three properties like that. But by and large, there aren't that many large lots left.
Well, we have a lot of large parcels of land. And I should bring in the map. Playing board probably remembers the map I had of fifty plus of various acreage parcels of certain acres.
Yeah.
Showed where we do have large parcels of, of land and a lot of them were in the R four district, the rural conservation district. We had ninety acres and eighty acres. We had 90 acres and 80 acres and so forth. Are those for sale right now? No.
There's like 17 acres on the Thompson Road right now.
You know, I.
In a rundle.
I want to develop that. Yep.
Ted, Ted, with the comprehensive plan, how long ago does that date back 10 acres?
Uh, 2016.
How about before that? They just carried that forward, I think in 2016, but it was originally set up when? That's what I'm saying, under the comprehensive plan.
No, I, I'm telling you, Marty, I, I, I made the suggestion of large lot subdivision, uh, uh, um, to the, uh, to the complaint committee as an alternative to constantly, uh, dealing with cluster subdivision. And so they, as they settled because of number one, skinny atlas and Casanova in New York, which have very progressive, uh, um, land use policies on agricultural preservation, they had minimum 10 acre lot line, lot sizes. Auburn has 10 acre lot sizes and the point being that they had asked me, what do you need to, to actually preserve rural characters? Said you gotta have a minimum of 10 acres. That's if you're going to divide everything up by 10 acres, uh, by, divided into parcels. 10 acres is the minimum that you're going to get where you're going to be able to preserve some sense of rural character.
Question, this is totally out of the circumstance, but do wind farms, solar farms fall into that?
No.
Acreage wise?
No, they need to be 30 acres. Minimum requirement in state of Maine under the governor's, uh, buyback program or incentive program was 30 acres.
Okay, just asking a question.
That doesn't mean you can't have a solar farm less than that, but in the state of Maine, that's what they, they required for you to get, be able to get the tax benefits. We don't have solar farms now. We were going to do solar farm and you recall, we were going to come up with some regulations for solar farm to permit them. But, uh, Con Ed, who was going to be the sponsor of it, uh, decided to pull out.
Can, we do not have a definition. Can that be any, one of those things on our workshop?
I, I guess, yeah, sure.
A definition of what, Marty, for solar farms?
Yeah.
You want a solar farm?
I mean, if it's not written, it's not allowed.
Right.
True, right.
Exactly. But, you know, I mean, that's a, that's a question for another time, whether we want to have solar farms. Um, I remember you, remember I asked Con Ed, tell me how this is a benefit to the community, to the town of Arundel. It takes business, in, in that case, they were taking some, uh, prime piece of real estate, so you're taking that piece of real estate out of circulation for 25 years and we're going to get how much in taxes? They said, how about if we give you a free electricity? Which means we weren't going to get any taxes out of them. And then they, they didn't come back. They said basically that they, they would have to set in ledge and they didn't want to set, set those pylons in ledge.
Okay, I'm sorry. I, I'm, I made it off the subject.
Yeah, so, uh, basically, yeah, um, large lot, I'll tell you honestly. Susan, depends on the circumstance. I mean, five acre lot, you can have five acre lots. It depends on where they are and what circumstance. If you put them out on Thompson Road in those field, five acre lots, you know what they'll look like? They'll look like weeds sprouting out. And as, and it looks like that now. And those are three acre lots, three acres plus lots, and that's not a lot of rural character. If you're talking about design character. You've got to be able to make it look rural and in some cases not so developed. And, uh, if you look at what I had for the, included that, you want to reduce that down to five acres, I don't have a problem. But if you can basically do what, um, the town in Nantucket did. The town in Nantucket did some pretty serious land use, uh, regulations back in the, in the eighties. Because all their moors, which are very open, were being developed, uh, by, uh, vacation homes. And so they put in these standards that you had to be behind vegetation, put it in a fold of land, reduce the impact of the building within the landscape. And you could do it. And, um, they were looking at less than five acre lots, they were looking at two acres lots and three acre lots. But, um, if you wanted to have the option of going to a, a lot, it should be bigger than three acres. And it should, uh, and you might have to put some standards in there to make, design standards to minimize the visual impact of those buildings in a way that it doesn't look like the weeds just sprouting out in the middle of the.
Right, and Sea Ranch did it in Northern California.
Yeah.
So like.
Well, they had complete control of the design and sea.
We're not going to get that, but you know what I mean.
Going to get that.
No, let's, let's, let's get back to this. Uh, if you look on the, on the, the, uh, information that Ted sent out, there are a number of questions. Uh, about clustering. And the first one is should the planning board continue with mandatory cluster subdivision of four acres, of four lots or more? Yes or no?
No.
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 Jens?
No.
Okay.
Wow.
I think that answers that question. Should the planning board require the applicant to provide a sketch plan? Uh, hang on just for a second, I gotta open this up a little bit. A, a sketch cluster subdivision design with a con, and a conventional subdivision design. And the board selects the one that best meets the town's objectives. So essentially we're telling them, you have to give us two, two designs. One for clustered and one for non-clustered. Do we want to do that?
If we say yes, we want, we should be able to work closely with the contractor that is going to do it.
Actually, the other question would be, uh, and this is maybe the, uh, uh, question for Jamie and Ted. What's, what's the, uh, cost range for doing that, that we're visiting on the contractor? By doubling up on the number of plans?
Extra, no, I'd say an extra plan, you know, you might be looking at a couple thousand bucks during the design.
That little?
I don't think, I mean, you're talking about very preliminary.
Yeah, we're talking about a sketch plan.
Yeah.
Yeah. Couple thousand bucks on a, on, 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 on a project that's going to be hundreds of thousands, if not millions of bucks.
Yep.
Why, why wouldn't we want that?
But if we make C an option, Jens, that should the planning board make cluster subdivision optional? And the answer is yes, then don't we, doesn't that leave it open then to consider other plans other than cluster housing and sort of take care of B?
Well, except it allows him to make the decision without educating us as to, at his dime, what the better decision might be.
So, so my take would be to make cluster preferable. And for the, for the developer to provide an option, show, show us a sketch type plan that would convince us that, that we should go more of a conventional route.
Agreed.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I'd be good with that.
Because we got, we got Jason's plan as a result of input from us and he didn't end up clustering in the way he thought he had to in the beginning.
Right.
Yeah.
And so that, if we make it optional, then we all get to collaborate on what the best thing is to put in that spot, no?
Yes.
Absolutely.
True.
Wouldn't that have worked also on Pinecrest?
I, I think, well, Pinecrest is a, is a P U D, Pine, Pinecrest is a planned unit development.
Cause Pinecrest has issues with water.
It has, it is issues with water, but Pinecrest is going to be, uh, is going to be a P U D project, because this is not going to be lots. There might be lots in it, but it's a mixed use development involving condominiums, basically, or house condominiums.
Yeah.
That's a different animal altogether. Now, I, I agree with Jamie. I, I mean, my idea is that we say, we, uh, the, the planning board wants to see cluster development. Uh, but we'll entertain, uh, but we'll entertain a conventional division if it meets X Y, X Y Z standards. Or benefits the land or benefits the planning board objectives. And we have to be very clear about what our objectives are. We have to very, have a very clear idea in our mind what you're trying to achieve.
Well, isn't rural character the blanket term that we're trying to achieve?
But I mean, drive through, what I would suggest is, you know, drive through like the Hisong development.
Yeah.
That was cluster.
Yeah.
You know, or is cluster. The, you know, the, the, I think it's a great example of why you would want to have cluster instead of just going solely conventional. You know, because you do have good pockets in there of, you know, where homes are and then breaks where there's, I mean, granted, a lot of it's, it's woods now because it hasn't been built out, but you know, even looking at the plan, you can see where there's, there's breaks and there's corridors for, um, you know, for, for woods and separation, but then you've got, you've got your sort of traditional conventional subdivision look throughout, you know, lots of other parts of it.
But then you look at Oak Ridge, Jamie.
Right. Oh, yeah. I agree. I mean, I think there, we've had plenty of examples where, where cluster is detrimental to the overall subdivision.
So I like what Jamie suggested.
Yeah, so do I.
No, I, I agree. I mean, I, I, I think the cluster should not, that's why I detail it this way, guys. I, I think, I think we should always have an option to go to conventional if it better meets the, the, the goals of the board.
I agree.
It's the land, if it better fits the land is the other issue too. Cause the idea, we are charged, the planning board has discretion and that's something you always have to remember. You, you have discretion in the design of subdivisions that best meet the goals and objectives that are expressed in the, in the subdivision ordinance. And if you look at the subdivision ordinance, there are a number of things in there, performance standards that we don't really address very often. One of which is that the, that the project shall fit and conform to the general folds and lay of the land and the topography. That, that you don't, you don't do what we've had with one other subdivision where you completely alter the topography, completely eliminate or alter it. Um, there's no reason the planning board has to put up on that and say, no, this, this doesn't meet that standard of it has to conform to the topography of the land and fit into the land.
What one was that, Ted?
Ledgewood.
Where is that, Ted?
Uh, Route 111.
Oh, yes, okay.
Oh, yeah, okay. Right next to, uh, uh, B D F.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it, they blasted the mountain away.
Yeah.
Well, seriously, no, you had to.
Yeah.
Because it was going down to Steve Hill. That's why the planning board, if you remember, advocated so strongly for swinging the road around.
Yeah. Okay, yeah.
Anyways, um, so you do have, the planning board has discretion. And, you know, you can't deny something completely, but you, you have discretion of what, what it best fits the land. You have certain, uh, performance standards that are, are the planning board just judgment. And then the applicant has to, has to convince the planning board that what they're providing, um, best fits the planning board's objectives and the town's objectives as expressed in the comp plan and as expressed in the subdivision ordinance. And, uh, we kind of did that and negotiated method with, with Jason. And I think we got a project that the planning board's a lot happier with.
Yes, I agree. So are we going to get pushback if we require two plans? I mean, we don't even have people that want to spend $10 in order to get a, a harvest, a wood harvesting permit, so.
Yeah, I know. Well, here's the thing, you want a subdivision, if you don't want to spend, if you don't, if you'd want to just waltz in and do whatever you want, then this is not the time to go to. Go to Hiram. You know, that's where you go. The simple fact is, this is a town that, that actually has said over and over again, we value our landscape. We value the character of our town and saying we want cluster divisions, so we get open space and link those open spaces. That's still our objective, but we'll consider conventional development. If it, if it, um, if it fits the land better and better meets the planning board's objectives and the town's comprehensive plan, you say that. And then you have the discretion to make a, you're going to make a value judgment. This, this is better than this. You made a value judgment with, uh, Rundle Keep. This plan is better than this plan, even though this plan was a cluster plan and the other one was a less of a cluster plan.
Right.
It's more of a conventional. So, um.
So I suggest we adopt, uh, Jamie's suggestion.
It's not going to be mandatory.
Right, and it's not.
And we're getting a pushback on this, you know?
It doesn't get triggered when it hits over four lots.
One good thing about this is that this is all within subdivision.
Yeah.
So we. What kind of pushback, Ted?
Um, there'll be a lot of people who, uh, are very married to cluster development. They are not developers, let's put it that way.
Right.
But you'll find, you'll find the complaint committee will be very, uh, they'll need some convincing on this. And, uh, and, uh, there's some, some conservation folks who'll push back on this.
Yes, but also too, with that soil analysis, that should give us more factors.
Well, it could, yes, it could. And, you know, quite frankly, sometimes, uh, a, as I think I was pointed out, a cluster division, and it, it's a question that's later on, but a, a cluster division sometimes gives you more lots than you would get in a conventional division.
Yeah. And, and, you know, that's going to, going to gear more toward, uh, who's your clientele? Yeah. If I, if, if we, if we had five acre subdivisions, I might be tempted to move to a subdivision, because I'd have five acres of land.
Right.
As, as opposed to, uh, moving into a subdivision where at, at a Rundle's keep where that first house going in had three quarters of an acre.
That was close to a half an acre was, it was, it was a little.
Worse.
So close to being, uh, being a violation of the plumbing code, because the plumbing code, the state of Maine says you cannot have a lot less than two, 20,000 square feet, which is essentially half an acre.
It was getting there. Which, which leads us to the next, uh, discussion point. That we want to have minimum lot sizes. We do not have in a cluster subdivision a minimum lot size. And thi- this became very evident to me, uh, at a Rundle's keep. And you, they, they were, there were two or three houses that were under an acre in size. And I just, I find that terrible. It's a three acre zone and it, no, that's just, it's too, we need to have some kind of a standard on, on lot size. I would be willing to look at it and say, okay, depending upon the zone you're in, if you're in a two acre zone or a, a three acre zone, maybe 50% of the, oh, of the zone. So if, instead of, if you're in a three acre zone, instead of going down to less than one acre, you were, you could go down as much as one and a half. But you would have to leave that other, uh, acre and a half in open space.
You know, Rich, uh, what I would, one thing I would suggest. Some people just don't want to have a lot of yard to keep.
Right.
And thinking about, uh, one of the points that somebody else made, I think it was Ted earlier, about, you know, uh, some of the common space is not really, uh, well enough developed to provide utility to the residents within the cluster subdivision. Uh, there haven't been requirements that, that they, uh, developer do that with walking paths and accessibility and generally, uh, um, making it presentable and, and sensibly usable by the people within the subdivision. It seems to me that maybe we don't need to have minimum, uh, lot sizes if, if lot sizes are going to be extremely small, but if they are going to be extremely small, maybe we direct our attention to what happens with that common space that's around it. I'm thinking about, for example, um, perhaps, uh, elderly people that just, you know, a, a tiny lot size doesn't bother them because they don't want to keep it, but it's nice to be able to use the, the common, uh, the common space.
Yeah, that's, you know, that, that's a valid point and, you know, not just, not just on, from an elderly point of view, what do you do if you've got families? It'd be nice. not just on, from an elderly point of view, what do you do if you've got families? It'd be nice if you had someplace where they could have a play, a playground to, to set up for their kids.
Right. Looking, looking not at the, at the tiny lot, but looking at the common area. Yeah. Or perhaps disabled people who don't really want to keep up a yard and don't want to pay somebody a lot of money to do it. You know, um, so I think there's a, there's a, perhaps a trade off there that we don't look at one without looking at the other. Meaning the, 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 uh, perhaps what might seem to be an undersized lot and what could be done to common area that serves that lot.
Yans?
Yeah, Marty.
Who maintains common area? That's the thing. After so many years, common area might overgrow. And who's responsible for common area so it stays safe?
The HOA?
Yeah. HOA does, yeah.
They're supposed to.
Sometimes they don't want to.
That's right. What happens?
It just reverts to, uh, to natural state.
But that's a, that's a matter of, um, the choice of those, uh, of those residents who are most affected by it.
Yep.
Their land.
Yeah.
The only other thing you could do, and we've done this before, and, you know, we talked about, you know, um, about this with the current project is land gets transferred to an open, to a, a land, um, a land bank or a conservation group. So it's transferred to a third party and they take care of it. Now, most third parties don't want to take care of little scripts of land, especially in keyhole subdivisions.
Right, because it's very time consuming.
Well, there's nothing there. There's nothing of value there for them. It's, you know, they have a 30 or 50 yards, you know, 50, 50 foot wide strip around the subdivision. There's, there's no environmental value that they see in having that.
Well, and even if they did, they'd be hopping from one location to the other.
Yeah. And, and, and then it's not connected to other open spaces. So there aren't wildlife corridors and there's not a chance to put a trail through it. And, uh, so it, it's not a value to them. So, um, what, what happens if you have a large piece of land? Um, you'll find a, uh, you'll find interest by a conservation group, just like ACT is interested in, uh, in Walter Woods is, uh, I should say the Oak Ridge Development's open space. Although they haven't made a deal with the HOA on that, it would appear to me that, um, that won't be happening. But, uh, I've already talked to ACT about, uh, um, last week's meeting, which, um, we have permission from, uh, from the developer's agent to approach them about taking, uh, taking over the conservation easement for Rundle's keep and more importantly, taking the back land. There's 50 acres of land there.
Right. And that makes it worthwhile.
That makes it worthwhile.
Yes, it does.
And certainly the association, they, they, they will pay the taxes on that. Um, even if they, uh, even if they can't use it. So they'll pay taxes. Won't be a lot. They'll still each pay a piece of the tax. It'll be attached to their house. Um, to the value of their house. The association takes it off their hands. They still have access to it. I mean, that's a win-win for them.
Well, it's.
It all depends on the situation.
It's even better than that. If they do a legitimate conservation easement, they're all going to get tax deductions.
Exactly.
And it, it enhances the value of their property too.
To the chair.
So where are we with this?
Well, you have to continue. There's, there's four questions there.
Through the chair.
Yeah, Marty.
Now, on that easement conservation, it's not necessarily put into tree growth, is it?
No.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all my question was.
No. So the, the four questions that we're looking at, should the planning board establish a minimum cluster subdivision lot size that is no less than one half the minimum lot size of, of the zone on, in which they're, they're established?
Depending on your soil. And your wetland.
So, but if you're in the R4, it's what? Three acres?
Yeah.
So you make it an acre and a half?
Make it an acre and a half. Minimum lot size.
That's one technique. I mean, that's, that's, that's the across the board technique regardless of where you are. So if you're in the, uh, you're in an R1, a one acre zone, uh, and you do a cluster, you can go down to half an acre. But you can't go any lower than that anyways. But let's say a two acre zone, like an R2, you go down to one acre.
With the rest of the land being reserved for open space.
Whatever you, whatever you have, um, if you, if you take one half acre off that property, that's one half acre that gets added to the open space. Anything that's reduced in the, in, in your minimum lot size, any reduction, that area of reduction is automat- must be automatically applied to the open space. And frankly speaking, and right now in our subdivision ordinance, 50% of the area, uh, in the R4 for a subdivision must be in open space. That's a standing rule in the, in the, uh, in the subdivision ordinance.
Wait, say that again, Ted. 50%?
If you're in the R4 district, which is the rural conservation district, 50% of the land must be in open space.
Okay.
Which is.
The, the problem that develops in there, I think in this particular case, it, it shouldn't be, uh, half of the minimum lot size. The lots themselves have to be, have to be part of the net resident, net density calculations. Otherwise, all you're going to do is get a bunch of wetland.
Well, it does, that's not the way it is right now. You can have your, half your lot in the wetland. Uh, you're gonna have, you can, and, and this is where the concern comes up. And this was, um, the concern being that you could have half that lot in a wetland. And you've got, basically, let's say you've got a one acre lot, you've gone down from two acres to one acre, one acre and, uh, half of that, one acre is in a wetland, you have an effective half acre lot.
In a situation like that, you're going to worry about septic and water.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you, you bet you do.
Well, that would be the, the question number two. Should the planning board establish minimum cluster subdivision lot size based on soil characteristics?
Yes.
Yes.
I definitely think we should.
Jamie, what's Jamie think?
Whether it's, whether it's minimum or whether it's a, it's a density type thing, I think it, it, it's valid to keep it in the, the calculation. Yeah, that, that sounds like giving a little bit more, um, movement room. That's what you're trying to do? Just to consider it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, because who, I mean, who knows? We could, you know, years from now, we end up with sewer.
Right.
And it, that point is moot.
Yeah.
Or at least in certain parts of the town.
I was gonna say, I'm not sure we're gonna get it out in the R4.
No, I don't think, I mean, yeah.
I'm still just trying to get on Route 1.
Right. We, we need a couple more Rundle cottages.
Uh, yeah, well, we need, we need, we need, uh, Kennebunk Sewer District to, um, to want, to want to invite us into their system so that we'll help pay for that brand new $30 million sewer upgrade they have to do with their system and they don't have any new users on that, that line right now. So whoever the current users are, they're going to absorb those costs. We can alleviate some of that cost for them if they take us on.
Right. I think we should gently push them in our direction.
We've tried gently.
With a big shove.
I want to send a letter to all of the KSD, uh,
Trustees?
No, not the trustees. No, I want to do it to the users.
Oh.
So when I, when I look at these four, uh, different questions, it, from looking at them, I think it's a choice of one out of the four. But correct me if I'm wrong on that, Ted. The first one, minimum cluster subdivision size that is no less than half the minimum lot size. The second one says
Easy.
Cluster lot based on soil characteristics and capacity. The third one is a minimum lot size based on a dimensional envelope. And then the last one is the board uses its discretion to determine minimum lot size based on a whole host of factors.
It's a lot of discretion in that one.
There is, uh, but I think, I don't think it's a question of yes or no on each one of these. I think it's a question of pick one of these four.
Yep. Or pick up, pick one that, another one that you, isn't on the list. Do a write-in.
We could, I, 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 it, when I look at these out of, out of the four of them that are available, I would go with the last one.
So would I.
Because he gives the planning board the most amount of discretion.
Right.
Yeah.
But it gives developers discretion too. So they're not so locked in.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think, uh, we have consensus on that, it sounds like.
Right. I think it cuts both ways, the flexibility.
Well, it also makes a response of them responsible or not just cutting a lot, you know, just cutting a pie up. You know, I give this much area and so forth. I'll fit the house in here. Now I'm going to jam it up in the back corner. And we, we've seen that with several projects where the house location is perched on the edge of a precipice practically. Where, where the kids are going to have no yard in the back or, you know, there is, there is no reserve septic field. Or it's way down on the other side of the lot, you're gonna have to run one hell of, of a line from the septic tank down to the first D box, you know?
Well, so we're asking them to participate with us in finding the best solution, just like we did in whether or not they should cluster or do a traditional, uh, development. So we're making them our partners in finding the best solution for the town. I'm fine with that. Because people push back when they feel like we make them do things that are too rigid. Well, we're asking them to participate with us to find the best solution for the town.
It also, it also means that there's a little bit of the unknown in here. And if the planning board has a certain, certain, uh, preference that's not revealed in the ordinance, um, that's, they may be spending some time filling out what, what the planning board likes and dislikes about their project. We're going to have to be very, very responsible in, in reviewing these lots and determining their suitability.
Yep.
And capability, suitability and capability. Like we did with.
I think both words change there.
Lot two was uninhabitable. Lot one, you know, was basically going to have headlights in its windows every time anybody drove in. It was just, you know, not a habit of a lot, not a good lot, not a lot that any citizen's going to really enjoy.
That's, that's where I think the planning board having the discretion, uh, to say yes or no to even, even do a specific lot within a subdivision for exactly that reason. And do you really want the guy in the first house to get everybody's headlight shining in the living room?
Or the kids have no place to play but in the street.
Right.
I think both those words should be incorporated in that.
Both what words, Ron? Um, Marty?
What we just said, cab, compatibility and, um, that both words were C. You just said.
Suitability, you mean? Compatibility, suitability?
Yes. In definition.
And appropriateness for the development. I mean, don't we do that anyway? To see whether or not the property is appropriate for the development that's planned?
If it's not written, it doesn't say it.
Yeah, but sometimes we don't. Oh yeah, you met the minimum lot size, you know? Now, we have that and, you know, we, and, and this really goes to the fact that when we do this, we have to really look at, because, you know, it's not only lot size, but we don't have a minimum frontage. We don't have a minimum side setback or rear setbacks as you do in the conventional subdivision. That's all up for grabs. In fact, um, interestingly enough, when you have a, a developer that cares about the development, you might find that, that they, uh, uh, that they, they, uh, do in fact enforce their own setbacks. What they feel is reasonable or desirable for the, for their market. Uh, because, um, Hisong's development there at Bartlett Farms too, has no setbacks, no minimum frontages, no setbacks in any of those lots. We, we first started developing and Jim Nagel kept coming to me and saying, I can't find the setbacks here.
Yes, but.
Again, an R2 setback too, because it's going to push, the house is going to be 12 feet wide.
Ted, but isn't, but isn't there somewhere a minimum setback of 50 feet?
Nope.
I didn't know we were developing tiny houses.
We are develop, no, it's not tiny houses, it's tiny lots. But actually, they, they made it work. If, if you drive down there, it works.
Yeah, it does.
That's another subject, tiny houses.
If it was a developer who didn't know what they were doing or a first timer, or they just sold the lots, you know, to anybody, um, you, you might have it just a mess.
Okay, so on to the next set of questions. Density adjustments.
Right.
Do we want to allow? Or? Well, actually, this doesn't say that we want to allow. This says, should the planning board have the authority to limit the number of bonus lots that could be created by clustering?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. You could have that.
Negotiating leverage for other things that might be desirable to request.
Right.
And should the planning board be granted the authority to appropriate some of the bonus lot area into open space?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes, but as long as it's not sold.
What do you mean?
Space has to remain in perpetuity.
Right. I think that goes without saying because that would affect the title issues.
No, what I'm referring to, there was supposed to be a playground over at Bartlett's.
Yeah.
And turn on, that was sold for $10,000.
15.
Or whatever.
Yeah. We'll get into some of those things later on. But, um, at the same time, it also should give the planning board the ability to give a bonus slot.
Right.
If they have, if they can meet them, if, if, if the conventional subdivision, you only can get five lots. But if they do this special clustering and they get eight lots, we say, okay, you can have eight lots that, that, that work, but we want, we'll give you that extra lot. But we want this place over here for open space.
Yeah.
Or we, we think you should provide this amenity for the subdivision. So it's negotiated. It's, it's pretty much negotiated.
All right, we're getting there, guys.
We are. The next set of questions. Uh.
Oh, my favorite.
Deals with minimum lot size? I thought we did this. Oh, no, it's, goes down.
Buffering is the next one.
Yeah, that, that's what I thought. I just don't know how I ended up back up at the top of the, the document. Thank you.
Both sides.
So we're looking at, uh, buffering. Is it always necessary to buffer a project from the road, especially in more urbanized zones such as the R1 or the DB1 district?
Yeah.
Okay, so I heard a no and I heard a yes.
No.
I'm a no.
You're a no, Marty's. Roger, you said yes?
Oh, you said, okay, I, I'm, I meant no.
Okay.
This now. Misinterpreted what you said.
Right. I think.
A buffer, a buffer as a co- as opposed to what usage?
Um, hiding the project. Think of it that way. I'm hiding the project between, behind the stand of trees.
So, we're talking about, we're talking about a project in the DB, what did you say, one or two?
Yeah, R1 and DB1.
No, it's.
Development.
You, you need to, what it's, that's not what it says. It talks about, uh, a, a buffer from the road, it, especially in more urbanized. A, a buffer from the road, especially in more urbanized zones such as the R1. The question is, is it always necessary to buffer a development from the, from? And I think, I don't think it's always necessary, but it's necessary based on the zone. In the R4, you want that buffer from the. You may not want.
Isn't that, isn't that what it's saying in A, in more urbanized zones, it's not necessary, necessarily to have the buffer?
Not the way I was reading it. You know?
Aren't we, what, I think we have to think about. Why we're asking, why we would wanna buffer the particular application? A buffer as opposed to some other. Using some other element like a setback. I mean, doesn't it depend on the context?
Well, it should. That's the question. Should, should it? Because right now, the way the ordinance is written. If you're doing a cluster subdivision, you've got a buffer at 50 feet on all sides, including the road front. Except where you come through. Except where you come through with your, with your entrance road. But there should be a 50 foot buffer all around the perimeter. And I think the objective of that is that is. A, that is a quick and dirty way of preserving rural character by trying to hide the.
But in urbanized areas, is it really necessary to impose that on the development? Because it is highly urbanized.
Right. Well, look at Joe, Joe's project, the seasonal cottages.
Right, he did that with landscaping. That became his buffer.
But that's not what buffering is.
I understand.
It's like, that, that is something that buffering can be though, right? It can be achieved through landscaping.
It's, it's supposed to visually obstruct the project from the road. That was the intent, and that's the way it's written.
But back to my point, I think in an area like where the seasonal cottages is. I agree with Jens that landscaping can act, maybe buffer isn't the right word, but as a.
Right.
Right.
It has a broader application than just visual blocking.
The way we use the term buffering in the ordinance, it is 75 to 100% visual blocking. That's why, that's why buffering should not, should be, should not, it's in the definitions. That's why it should not be loosely applied. We use buffering for everything, and it isn't. It's, you know, as a landscape architect, I'll tell you, no, I don't think we should do that. I think we should have. A, a good landscape, a good presentable. We wanna present a good front. In urbanized areas, we wanna have a good landscaped entrance statement to the project. We want it to be observed from the, from the road and, and be enticing. Be something that's attractive and enticing for both the residents and for the, uh, for the community. If you go by Joe's project, for instance, you see there's a lot of expense in landscaping ponds and walls. With the intent of creating a visual display that attracts one to the project and enhances the area. And I, I think our current requirement is that we gotta put a 25 foot wooden buffer around everything, put a fence, wooded fence around everything. I don't think achieves, achieves the goals.
I agree. So I think the answer to A is no.
Right.
Well, that's why.
Well, the answer is no.
It's too restrictive.
Yeah, I, I agree. It is too restrictive.
Either that or we take the word buffer out, but we're in the buffering section, so I guess we're not gonna do that.
My only concern about that is that you get, no offense to attorneys. But the only concern is that it, is it always necessary to buffer a development project from the road? And everything after that modifies that comment. The comment itself is, is it necessary to buffer a development space? It doesn't say in every district, it doesn't say in any district. It just says, is it necessary? And I'm afraid somebody would come along and argue, well, I don't need to do this at all in any district. Be it the R4, the R3, we don't need to buffer them. The ordinance doesn't say that it's necessary. The ordinance does say, well, what about if it's in this other zone? Do we need to buffer it?
Long cabin road.
I'm just concerned about the, the, uh, somebody coming along and playing wordsmith with it. Cause we all know what it means.
Well, it would mean that we have to come up with a much better definition of what we expect of the, uh, as, as the entry statement.
Right.
Or a better condition of buffering.
Right, because in A, buffer isn't really the best term.
Use a different word.
Use a different word than buffer.
Well, I.
Cause I think you could leave buffering in the R4.
Yeah. Let me ask you, I mean, we've got a situation, we've had a situation up on Oak Hill where we have residents. Who are very dissatisfied because they were under the impression, they were given the impression they wouldn't see the project.
Yeah.
And they have wanted and demanded that there be. And in, that we take remedial action to ensure that we will not see the project because of the way the word, the word buffering. Is used and how buffering was required in cluster subdivisions. And it's unfair to the residents that they have an expectation that we haven't, we haven't fulfilled. And the, the expectation is very expensive. It says, yeah, you have to buffer it. You have to use fences, landscaping. Topography, mounding in order to obstruct the view. Of that project from neighboring, neighboring properties. And in some cases, that's just gonna be difficult beyond belief.
Well, it's.
We're not gonna achieve visual blockage unless we put a fence around the whole thing. And with a 40, 50 acre project, that's gonna be a little bit pricey.
So gentlemen, the definition of buffer, besides, I'll pick out what I think are the best. Uh, but it says cushion, a screen, a guard. A, a shock absorber and an intermediary.
Yep.
But it doesn't say.
It doesn't make things to visual.
Right, it doesn't say, uh, you know, a blackout. It doesn't define a blackout shape.
But it is.
Something that mitigates or, or moderates or. I like shock, a shock absorber, but I, I know we can't use it, but that's sort of what it is. It's like. An area that absorbs the transition from the road to the development itself, but. Uh, and that's what Joe's project does very well because it's on Route 1. Wouldn't be appropriate.
If we look at Joe, his buffer, for lack of a better term, is a couple of hundred feet wide.
Well, yeah, and that's consistent with, uh, I've got, I've got a. Some insight on, on what the law court says a buffer is. And this is, uh, this is from 10 years ago. In a, in a case called Wyman versus Town of Phippsburg, a buffer. In contrast, and they, they're contrasting it with, with a setback. They say a buffer in contrast requires some combination of distance. Landscape and or vegetation in order to reduce noise and increase privacy. You can be satisfied with a reduced distance, provided there's adequate screening through some other means. And then they go on to just comment that a buffer is also a required distance between distinct uses. As for example, commercial and residential. So they've.
That's a pretty good definition.
I think it is.
I think it's a very good definition.
Yeah.
Can I, can I read you what our definition is?
Yeah, it's pretty restrictive.
That's because where, where you need, you, when you use buffer in that context. You need, you need to be able to have something quantitative that you can do. And our, ours is in situations where you're separating incompatible land uses. Or trying to hide a land use from another land use. And that's why it says it's 75 to 100% visual obstruction. I'll guarantee you this, as we learned with Bastilfin. I learned this a long time ago when doing highway design, is that you need about 500 feet of evergreen forest. On a level ground to be able to reduce sound one, one decibel. Which is why you see fences along the highways these days.
Yep.
Not, and not vegetative buffers, because it just doesn't work. But it does work for visual. And in, in this particular case, when we, when they've used, when you have used historically, when you, the planning board. Have used buffering and have built the ordinance around the term buffering. It is for this intent to obstruct views of the adjacent land uses. Now then we have screening, which is a different animal altogether.
And much less.
Much less, and it's, it's got more flexibility for the planning board. If you look up the definition of screening. Which.
A buffer, actually what happens in the thesaurus, that it's screening, screen and buffer are synonymous.
Yeah, but in landscape architecture, they're not.
Right, I know, I understand that. Although I think we should figure out how to incorporate Jens's definition that he just read.
Well, let me look at screening.
In here.
Look at screening. Screening says, the application of plant material, earthwork, fencing structures, or any combination thereof. That visually obstructs 33 to 74% of a land use activity from a specified vantage point on another property. Visual obstruction shall be maintained on a year round basis. In general, screening shall be applied to separate non-residential uses on adjacent properties. Screening can be anything. Screening can be any combination of those things. It's not that you don't see it. It's that you, you create a virtual barrier.
Right.
But we don't have to, it's not an either or situation. We can have, you have.
Well, you use one or the other. Use one or the other. Say, oh, okay, you can screen or landscape it. We can come up with a, a landscape strip. Define what that is. You can exceed it. Sure, go ahead. Joe exceeded everything. But you know, the funny thing is Joe never put in the buffer that was required. Because it required, the, the ordinance required a buffer at that time that we approved that. Which we basically said landscaping is suitable for instead of a visual obstruction.
Right, and obstruction is not always the most suitable either.
It isn't.
Right. Jens read. I thought that was pretty good.
But also we have to consider, like in Joe's case, you have height value, uh, height. And not all flat land.
Yep. You can use topography too.
So.
Right. But that's, 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 that's natural landscaping. It's, is, is it not?
Yeah.
When you don't, right? I mean, it's, it's what's there and making good use of what's there.
It's, yes, it's orienting the, the building in, in the landscape in such a way that it's, it's screened from the adjacent use. Okay. You can use distance, distance, distance works, but we don't have a lot of distance in this town that we can use.
Well, if the answer to question A is no, and it does appear. That everybody thinks that that answer is no, then questions B, C, and D are irrelevant. Because, because we've, we've said that it's not always necessary to buffer. And the next three questions discuss the, the, the width of the buffer strip. Who has the authority? It, it, it just seems to me that B, C, and D become irrelevant.
Well, you go tell Susan Senate that.
Well, so I thought A, and maybe this just needs to be work, reworked. We're talking about urbanized zones.
Exactly.
Period. And so B, C, D, and E are not irrelevant. In residential zones that are not on, you know.
Right.
Those districts are on heavily traveled, you know, urbanized streets.
But this, but, but that does affect the residential R1 zone.
Yeah, but I, I think just because we're. We're saying, uh, no, doesn't, doesn't mean it's not gonna be necessary sometimes. And when it is, then we.
Should have some control over.
B, C, and D.
Right.
Okay.
Again, it's making the developer the partner to find the appropriate solution for the situation.
Yeah.
Instead of coming up with some blanket arbitrary, you know, distance or number.
Then I, I would suggest in B, it, it's. The question should not say, should the planning board increase the width, but should the planning board be able to increase the width?
Correct.
Should you? Should, okay, have the authority, yeah.
Yes, have the authority.
Yes.
That would make more sense.
Right.
Yeah, and this, and the same with, with, in question C, it, it already says in question C, should the planning board have the authority? So yes, we should.
Yes. By how much? It, I don't think we need that. It depends on, you know, it's, it's case by case basis.
Situation requires it.
Right. So in B, uh, should that say, should the planning board have the authority?
Correct. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Right.
And so the planning board have the authority to increase the width of the buffer depending on the forest condition, yes. And if, if yes, by how much? It, it depends on the.
As needed, because for example, like on, we had champagne.
Yep.
That was as needed to reminisce the situation.
Yeah, right up to.
Or when necessary, or whatever.
Cut it.
And D is, should the planning board have the authority to reduce the width of a buffer? Yes.
To no less than 30 feet.
That's fine.
Yeah, because they're gonna, they're gonna prove that they can buffer it to the 75, 100% blockage. So yeah, okay.
Except the most important one is E.
In order to avert encroachment and event eradication by homeowners. Should the buffer strip be conveyed in fee to the HOA, the town, a land trust? Or remain with the individual property owner? I think it should go to the HOA or a land trust.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right, cause that maintains some consistency.
Right.
Well, we don't have. Yeah, but yeah, and, and, and we've, we've had some issues out of Brookside where the new property owner says, I don't want that buffer there. Then I have an easement there. You know, right to put that on my property.
So we, do we invest that provision with the same consistent language? Uh, of should the. Planning board have the authority to. Uh, require?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Justly throughout that buffering section then, in terms of our. Grammar.
And that's something that we, uh, we told, uh. Well, I know I told Jason on the second half of Oak Ridge Terrace Two, you know. Provide a buffer around the, outside of the project and it will be belong to the HOA period.
And it goes into the CCNRs, right?
Right.
Yeah. Oh, large lot zoning. It be.
Yep. Okay, we're making progress here.
Yeah.
This item's taking more than 10 minutes.
Okay, well, it shuts off. Off of your head. Provide an exemption for large lot subdivisions in the R4 district. I say yes.
What, where are you?
I'm in large lot zoning.
Large lot zoning. The next, next set of questions down.
Didn't we skip over, uh, utilization of open space?
There's no questions.
My golly, that, who wrote this thing?
I don't know, but I think we should answer the questions and we will still be done by 9:30.
Okay.
That's right. So we, if we get, if we get down to the, that utilization of open space. Should the planning board provide an exemption for large lot subdivisions in the R4 district? I wouldn't restrict it to the R4. You know, I, I. I'd include R1, 2, and 3.
Why would we want to do that for all of them? I mean, we want to.
Because they're all residential. And if, if somebody has got ninety acres of land, uh, I don't know how much Pamela has, but she's the first.
Five acres.
That's five acres? Okay. But let, let's say, there, there are some people down there that have fifty acres or more. And they could very easily decide they want to do a large lot subdivision in that area. Shouldn't they be able to? It's a residential zone and they're going to put in residential houses. They're just going to be the envy of the neighborhood.
Well, that, that goes back to the whole idea of why do we have R one, R two, R three, R four?
Yeah, I would say R three and R four, but, um.
Because the, the zone doesn't require that you have a one acre lot as a maximum. It requires a one acre lot as a minimum.
But if you're doing a subdivision over four acres, that you have a cluster subdivision.
And we're talking about being, being able to exempt large lot subdivisions and. I, I, I don't see the problem with, with, if you've got enough land for a residential subdivision and you want to do a large lot so that, because people are gonna, I think people find large lots much more attractive than they do smaller ones, but that's me, because I prefer the, a lot of land.
Usually come out my way for that. But that's not true, because we have them in our, in our rental, and we have huge parcels of being, of land that people have.
Yeah.
So what's the consensus, everyone? Do we leave it just in the R four, or do we open it to other districts?
I would say three only, not one and two.
I was going to say three and four.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Okay.
More reason to.
Good there. Are you, you're good with that, Jamie?
Sure.
Roger?
Yeah.
Okay. Marty?
Yay.
Okay, so it'll be R three and R four. The CPRC recommended a one minimum lot size. What?
Minimum lots.
A minimum lot size of ten acres. Do you support this size? No, I don't.
CP what?
That's the.
The playing review committee.
Contra, oh, comprehensive plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, just open the comping committee. I don't know why we need an R in there.
I don't.
It's cool.
I wouldn't recommend a lot size of ten acres. I think a lot size of five would work better.
Five or seven.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I wouldn't recommend ten.
How about if it was different, different depending on what zone it was in? Five in the R three and, and seven in the, uh, in the R four.
R four.
Well, we're gonna have fun when Donna DeKendron comes.
Okay.
I like that.
She'll consider that progress, actually. She'll consider it good progress.
Yeah, she will.
So seven in the R four and five in the others?
The R three, yeah.
Five in R three and.
And then, what special conditions? Uh, buildings should be screened and or hidden from the road?
Yes.
Natural landscaping. If you don't have.
Landscaping. No hidden is necessary.
If, if you don't have any originally there, why do you need to screen it if it's already there and not there already?
Well, that's, that's the very next question that we're asked. Buildings are located out of open fields or behind trees and topographic rises.
Yes.
Lots cannot be divided, subdivided by covenant. It's in the deed. You can't subdivide it.
Right.
Correct.
Minimum setback? What size lots we talking here?
Five and seven.
Five and seven.
I, I can't imagine if you're, uh, if you're, uh, if you have a seven acre lot, you're gonna put it twenty-five feet from the road. Unless seventeen fifty.
Right, some of the old houses are right up the road.
My house was right on the road in Gray.
Yeah.
The barn was right across the street, right on the road.
Yes, but that was the time.
That's right. That's, well, the, the road went up to the house.
And it was practical.
But don't forget, they didn't, they only had horses the most of the time.
I know, and the road only was to go up to my house. And then they went up and up the mountain, kept going.
Yeah, I like it that the lots cannot be subdivided by covenant. Yes.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we're just, just opening up ourselves up for re-subdivision and then we've lost.
Oh, I totally agree.
Yeah. Create character, is create that rural character. That's the thing that drives this community, is this rural character. And unless we do something, we're going to lose it. And this is one of the ways we can start giving options and preserving some rural character by having larger lots and, and putting, fitting the buildings into an area where they're not sitting out there screaming, like, and popping up like weeds out of the.
So what should this setback be?
Well, that's a good question.
In the R three, are the R, yeah, in the R three, what should the setback on a large subdivision be?
Fifty feet?
At least fifty.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking a hundred and fifty.
Okay, I'll go for more.
I, I think you'll get a lot of pushback for a hundred and fifty, but I, I think a hundred is not bad.
That is what we have in the R four already on a major.
So let's leave it at that.
I agree.
Leave it at a hundred feet or fifty feet?
A hundred.
Hundred.
Okay.
We're talking about lodge, large lot subdivisions.
Right.
So a hundred feet shouldn't be a hardship.
And that would be in both the R three and R four.
Yeah.
R three and R four.
Okay. And the minimum usable lot area.
So what's an appropriate amount, Ted?
Do we?
Too much?
Should it be a percentage of the lot size?
Hmm.
Depends on the soils, doesn't it?
But you have to have a certain amount that is a building envelope that's, um, appropriate, right?
Yeah.
So it would be a third? Would it be half?
Well, the a third would be an acre and a half in the R three.
Yeah, no, about large lot, large lots anyway. I mean, especially large lots, why? Why is this?
Because you could have a ten acre lot that's largely wet.
We're moving, we're moving more and more into marginal lands, and we're gonna find more and more properties that have wetlands on it. And it's the same sort of thing, do, a lot, my large lot is ten acres or, you know, I, seven acres and three quarters of it's in brimstone pond, you know, there's, and I, and I'm not picking on the Legros, but I mean, it's, it's in a giant wetland.
Okay, but we're talking.
Third?
I, I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know.
It seems to me, I understand the point, Ted, but it just seems to me, we just, we're talking about, um, uh, the footprint of buildings essentially, right? Buildings and maybe.
We're talking about adequate space. We always want to make sure we have adequate space for, for, for the house, for the building. And when we're, you know, you have a bigger lot, you're gonna have side, you're gonna have, uh, outbuildings too, most likely. Um, and, uh, a septic.
Yeah. It just seems to me, even if we had a house that was a hundred by a hundred, as much as that, or a hundred by two hundred, we're still not going to get above half of it in, uh, buildings, uh, on it.
Yeah, I would say we, we probably don't need more than ten thousand square feet or fifteen thousand square feet.
Right.
A good area.
So I, I don't know. I, I don't think we ought to struggle with this one too much.
I think what we should do is, is it would be, it's still a discretionary thing of the planning board. You're gonna show us where the house location is, right? So we're gonna see whether or not you have enough space around it to make it, make sense. It's hanging off the edge of a cliff, and then, then, you know, falls into the river, or it falls into a wetland. Um, then we're gonna say, nah, that's not a good location. Or we need more land to make sure that they, you're gonna get a septic and a, and a well and so forth. And that's all.
Yeah, I, I was, I was thinking.
We're, we're, we're asking them for actual house location on the land in order to meet these standards. So I'm, I'm, you know, I think we can make discretionary judgments when we're doing it. Just like we did with Jamie saying, that lot's too narrow. It doesn't work for a house. So this is discretionary in the planning boards. So, you know, it, it's something where you, you're gonna make a value judgment based on what the information that they're gonna give you, because you, you have these other standards and those aren't small standards. Those, those are gonna be, uh, you're gonna have to do some thought as where you're gonna put these things.
To the chair.
For me.
Be right there, Marty.
So yeah, I think we could strike the last one there.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
To the chair.
Yeah, Marty.
Does this make sure this covers family splits?
Yeah, it cannot be divided or by any means, not a family split, not any kind of division. It's not that it goes through a subdivision. It cannot be divided in the future.
Does that have to, so we don't get family splits? That's what I'm, where we've had that problem before?
Yes, we have. And no, it would be prohibited. That's, it's a contract. It's a contractual, they go, it's a contractual subdivision. That's why if we require clusters and we say, well, you can have a large lot, it's a contract that you got your approval based on the fact that this will never be split.
Right.
You split it, and it says so in the deed that this can never be split. If you attempt to split it, you're in violation of your permit. And you won't get a subdivision approval for that split, because this, anytime you do any re-subdivision of a, of, of an approved subdivision, it's gotta go back to the planning board.
Right.
Unless they change the laws in the state of Maine. They never do that.
So we've, ladies and gentlemen, we've made some very good progress tonight.
And it is nine twenty-three.
That's right.
Susan, you should have been around when we were getting kicked out of the fire department at ten thirty.
Well, we had a few meetings at the school that it was ten thirty.
That's true.
We had, we had a very dear friend of mine who was a fireman working per diem who quit the night we were there, because we were there at eleven thirty and he, he walked out. He said, he's done with it.
But we weren't on Zoom.
No, we were face to face. He was not a happy camper.
By the way, just for your information, the, uh, the, uh, sound system and the video system is up and running at the town hall now.
Great.
Nice.
It is going to be live stream.
That's, that's still nice.
Okay. I just pass on the information. I can see.
But we still can do Zoom on live.
As soon as they.
If the town, back to the town hall, I could see.
As, as soon as General Mills decides that, uh, we can come out of lockdown and, and start pretending we're human again. I notice I said pretending, because I, I refuse to admit to being one.
Uh.
So I move that we adjourn.
No second.
Can we, can we do live stream through Zoom?
Isn't that what we're doing, Marty?
No.
I don't think so.
No, we can't.
No, not, not through Zoom.
Okay, well, I move that we adjourn and pat ourselves on the back. We're getting through a lot of stuff.
Yes, and now we can work on putting all of this stuff together into ordinances so that we can have a couple of public hearings and then amend the subdivision ordinance. And keep, and keep on moving.
Keep on moving.
So do I have a second?
Yeah.
There's been seconded. I'm waiting for a, um, a.
No, it's.
Yeah.
I.
No, we're just, we're adjourned. We don't need.
No, we don't. Actually, by Robert's rules, we don't.
Don't vote on a motion to adjourn. We're just done.
We're done.
We're done.
We're done.
Thank you all.
Take care, everybody.
Good night.
All right.
Good night.
Good night.
Oh, they moved my recording button up.